The fifth meeting of the Mayor and City Council will come to order. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber to my right. I reserve the right to limit the amount of each time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak for each agenda item this evening. If everybody would rise for the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Mo.
Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Almighty God, we gather this evening are to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all in authority. Grant unto them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty in behalf of all thy people. We commend this city, this county, this state, this nation, our armed forces, our law enforcement, and our fine rescue that immerse full care and understanding. Remember all those who lie upon a bed of affliction, encompass those who mourn the loss of loved ones, in the name of the one whose Lord I like we pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Agenda item four, call or roll, Ms. Ralph.
Mr. DeWalt.
What'd you say? Oh, President.
Mr. Sitner.
Here.
Ms. Nicholas.
Here.
Mr. Smalls.
Here.
President Les.
Here.
Mayor Mo.
Thank you. Move to agenda item number five. Third public hearing with possible action and ordinance number 1924. An ordinance of the mayor and city council approving map amendment application number 880 to amend the planned unit development plan for redevelopment of the Pudsey Golf Course into a residential community and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the third reading. Christian, you want to read the file into the record, please?
Sure. Good evening. Map amendment application number 880 for PUD zone modifications was filed on October 30th, 2017 by C.S. Protective Greens LLC, 6290 Montrose Road, Rockville, Maryland, 20852. Requesting approval to amend the PUD zone to allow redevelopment of the Protective Greens Golf Course, which consists of 191.71 acres of land located at 14115 Greenview Drive, Laurel, Maryland, 20708. On October 31st, 2017, a request asking for comments was sent to the Maryland State Highway Administration, Prince George's County Health Department, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, Washington Suburbance and Sanitary Commission, Maryland Department of Planning, and Prince George's County Public Schools. Responses were received from the following agencies on the following dates. Prince George's County Department of Permitting, Inspections, and Enforcement on December 4th, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission on December 11th, WSSC on December 6th, State Highway Administration on December 6th as well, Prince George's County Public Schools on December 7th. All responses have been made part of the official record for this application. On October 31st, 2017, a request asking for comments was sent to the following city of Laurel departments: Public Works, Park and Recreation, Police, Office of the Fire Marshal and Permits, and also the city's emergency manager. A response dated November 2nd, 2017 was received from the police department. On November 6th, the fire marshal provided a response. November 21st, the Department of Public Works provided a response. On November 29th, the Department of Parks and Recreation provided a response, and the emergency manager provided responses on December 7th and December 12th. All responses received have been made part of the official record. On November 16th, 2017, a notice of the filing of the application was sent to 270 contiguous property owners. 176 letters were delivered, 94 were unclaimed or unable to be delivered, and no forwarding addresses was known. The amount of information is a part of the file as well. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the December 21st and December 28th, 2017 editions of the Prince George's Centennial. The planning commission held a meeting on December 12th, 2017, and the application was discussed. Staff gave a summation of the staff report and illustrated that if the proposed application were approved, it would allow the applicant to continue the zoning process to apply for appropriate approvals to redevelop the golf course into a residential community. The applicant's attorney and consultant team gave presentations of the proposed project. Furthermore, several residents of the Protective Greens community and another individual of the Greater Laurel community spoke at the hearing as well to address their concerns regarding the application. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated December 18th, 2017 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on December 12th, 2017, the following action taken on the subject zoning application. On motion by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Kish, and carried on a roll call vote by all other members present, the planning commission recommended that the City of Laurel Mayor and City Council grant map amendment application number 880 with conditions outlined in the technical staff report with the addition of the following recommendations offered by the planning commission at their meeting held on December 12th. Notification for the community meeting proposed by the applicant shall be sent out via regular mail and advertised by digital sign within the community if possible. The planning commission recommends that the mayor and city council consider delaying their action on map amendment application number 880, ordinance number 1924, until after the applicant-proposed community meeting is held. The second public hearing of the application was scheduled to be heard by the mayor and city council on January 8th, 2018. Due to incumbent weather, the meeting was rescheduled to January 8th, 2018. At the January 10th, 2018 mayor and city council hearing, the application was continued for a third public hearing in order for the applicant to hold a community meeting and discuss the concerns of the residents of the neighboring properties. The applicant sent the city a notification for the scheduled community meeting to be held on January 18th, 2018, and a notification was also sent out to the contiguous property owners via regular mail on January 9th, 2018. Also on January 9th, 2018, the city's digital message board sign was placed in the Protective Greens community to advertise the meeting. All persons of record were notified by the Department of Economic and Community Development via email about the community meeting. The third public hearing is held January 22nd, 2018. Notification was advertised in a January 11th, 2018 edition of the Prince George's Centennial. Also on January 11th, 2018, signs to advertise the third public hearing were placed throughout the community. The community meeting was held on Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, at the Protective Greens Clubhouse located at 14115 Greenview Drive, Laurel, Maryland, 20708. The applicant submitted a memorandum with a summary of the community meeting to the Department of Economic and Community Development on January 19th, 2018. The memorandum is part of the file and was transmitted to the city's council office on January 22nd, 2018. To date, one resident has reviewed the file. One resident requested documents be sent to them at the December 12th, 2017 planning commission meeting. One employee at a law firm and one city resident that works in the Greenview at the Greens building requested information pertaining to this application. Fourteen individuals requested to be added as persons of record, and all requests were satisfied. That concludes the reading of the file. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Christian. I'll open the public hearing at 7:08. First person to have signed up to speak is Bill Ship. Take your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be back here again tonight. My name's William Ship with the law firm of O'Malley Miles in Calverton, and we're here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I wanted to outline what I intend to do and make sure that works with what the president sees in terms of managing time. We have a PowerPoint presentation, which we already presented to the council at work session and at the planning commission. I do not intend to go through the entire PowerPoint again. We do have a couple updated slides that we really prepared in preparation for the community meeting you heard about, we'd like to show you. There were really two major issues that we wanted to address. The community has a number of comments that we are listening to and keep hearing, but there were two major ones. One is traffic, and the other is floodplain slash stormwater management. I did want to direct your attention to the new slides regarding traffic. Like I said, I'm going to just go through most of these. Here we are in traffic safety. I did want to bring up our traffic consultant, Mr. Wes Gucker, from the Traffic Group, to briefly update you on the slides that we added in response to some of the comments from the community.
Mr. Gucker, if you state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. For the record, Wes Gucker, Traffic Group Incorporated, 9900 Franklin Square Drive, Baltimore, Maryland. The community brought up two major issues. One was precisely... One was at the intersection. We spent quite a bit of time at the last hearing dealing with the intersection of 197 and Clubhouse Road. What I determined and found out that indeed there's a safety issue there. And the problem, the problem is that intersection today operates with what we call an exclusive permissive left turn phase, so that when vehicles are... Is there a... No, is there a button? Red light? Laser? Laser? No. Okay. So, when cars are in either left turn lane waiting to make a left turn, and there's another car in the opposite left turn lane waiting to make a left turn, it blocks the sight distance. You cannot see oncoming vehicles. So what we did was, we went to State Highway Administration and said, "We got a problem here. That intersection, like the others along 197, should be changed from what is called exclusive permissive to a dedicated left turn." Yeah, I'm not sure it will either. No, it won't. But thanks.
It's working.
Was it working? Okay. So, well, it's working on the wall, just not working on the screen. That's the problem with those. And quite frankly, I've been searching to find something that works on a TV screen. So what we've said to the State Highway is, we'd like to change this from exclusive permissive, where you can go on the green arrow and you can go on ball green, to strictly being able to turn left on a green arrow. State Highway Administration has agreed with that and said, yes. In fact, we wanted to do that also, but we couldn't fund it. I said, "That's not a problem. We'll take care of that. We'll make that change." The other thing that we were asked to do was to look at the intersection of Greenview and Clubhouse. And the community was concerned about how that intersection was going to operate. As a traffic guy, I'm never in favor of four-way intersections or three-way stop-controlled intersections. So what we've recommended, subject to the city approval, is to install what we call a mini roundabout. And that would operate in such a way that the folks that are coming up from the south that wanted to make a left turn or go through on Greenview would have the right-of-way. They would always have the right-of-way and would never be stopped by cars that are leaving the proposed PUD. So that does a couple things. Number one, it eliminates the need for multi-way stop sign. Number two, it provides the community on the south from the single family with always having the right-of-way to get through that intersection. We think that's a good thing. Additionally, we will, although not shown here on the sketch, we will provide pedestrian crossings so that there's a clear understanding of where the pedestrians will cross through the intersection. Interestingly enough, about 65% of the cars that leave this community in general go north on 197. 65%. Only 35% are making a left turn to go south on 197 towards the BW Parkway. Also interestingly enough, coming out of that south side of the single-family portion of the community, about 25% of those cars go straight through up Greenview to make a right to go north onto 197. We also examined in a simulation detail, not an animation, a simulation, how the section of Clubhouse will operate between 197 and Greenview, and found that, quite frankly, it's going to operate just fine. That was our decision to do that type of analysis. We're convinced that that intersection, that section of Clubhouse Road, with the improvements that we're proposing at 197 and the improvements we're proposing at Clubhouse in Greenville, will result in a section of road and intersections that will operate safely and efficiently and operate better than they do today.
Thank you, Mr. Gucker.
As I said, Mr. President, the other major issue was floodplain and stormwater management. I'd like to bring our consultant up to address that. Alex Villegas from Rogers is going to just hit the high point again on the proposal for floodplain and stormwater management.
Just so everybody understands, on the floodplain issues, they're dealing with FEMA and Corps of Engineers. And on the stormwater management, they're dealing with Prince George's County. Correct?
Good point, Mr. President. For the record, Alex Villegas with Rogers Consulting, 1101 Mercantile Lane, Dargo, Maryland. So, perfect segue to what I was going to go through on each... How we're moving forward with the stormwater management and the flooding and the concerns that were raised by the community. So I'm going to start with the stormwater management. When we prepare the stormwater management concept, that's going to be reviewed and approved by Prince George's County, D-PY. One thing that we wanted to do is understand some of the comments that we received that when there's a large rainy event, they will be flooding in the golf course. What we learned, we were able to obtain copies of the approved and asphalt drawings of the surrounding communities. And what you see in this drawing is the asphalt of all the housing around it, and everything gets piped via storm drain, and is actually going to outfall into the main pond when you're actually on the golf course, the main pond, but the clubhouse. But this pond is not a stormwater management facility. It does not have a structure and a control structure and outflow structure. The entire floodplain, the entire golf course was designed without any stormwater management. So when it rains, it is so flat, and it's really designed to pretty much keep the water. What we're going to do, the first step, and this is above and beyond for our development, we're going to retrofit the existing pond to become a stormwater management pond to actually manage the adjoining neighborhood. So that's very important. And we have met already with D-PY, Prince George's County D-PY, to start this process. The second aspect with Mr. President and I, is the 100-year floodplain. And I want to go over how the process goes and who reviews the floodplain. This is not just one agency, it's multiple agencies. The first step is with the City of Laurel. When I put this presentation a couple weeks ago, we were saying we submitted to the city. At this point, the city and the group have reviewed with an outside consultant our 100-year and proposed floodplain mitigation. We have received approval from the city, and that's just the first step to get us moving towards the floodplain mitigation. After this, we're going to go to Prince George's County, and as part of the stormwater management concept, they are going to review our stormwater management and incorporate the 100-year floodplain and the mitigation. Then we're going to have a state agency, the Maryland Department of Environment, MDE, they're going to review our floodplain as part of our wetland application. And last, we're going to go to FEMA, federal agency which actually holds the mapping of the 100-year floodplain. In these slides, I have two more slides, and I'll go quickly to them. These slides is an overlay of an aerial image of what the current mapping is. And as you can see, not only the entire property, the golf course, the clubhouse, but multiple of the single-family homes and the communities up north are within the FEMA mapping for the floodplain. And a lot of these houses are paying for floodplain insurance. What we're doing, and the floodplain that was reviewed and approved by the city, and now we're going to start the review process by the other agencies, is going to modify the map to actually take our 100 acres of the golf course to the outside of the FEMA mapping, as well as the single-family homes and lower communities. So they're going to be able to reuse their payments on the floodplain insurance and everything else. One question that was asked is like, where has this been done? So I presented a couple of cases. I personally work on the Greenbelt Station project. This was about 10, 15 years ago. And the entire Greenbelt Station, what you see here, is the preused mapping before the compensatory stores and floodplains was modified. This is the new map. And as you can see, the development areas are outside the floodplain, and this is what it looks like. There is about 600 residential units already built in there. And the other example, this is a current one, the riverfront of West Hallsville Metro Station is next to the West Hallsville Metro Station. This is the current FEMA mapping. This is the existing aerial photo of the site. This is the proposed development, and we currently have received approval by Prince George's County, by MDE, and now we're getting the approval from FEMA to modify the map. So I wanted to illustrate two examples, one that you can see and drive and see it, and one that is just recently approved. And I think those were my highlights.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So as I said, Mr. President, we're not going to go through the entire slideshow, but I do want to make sure that this updated slideshow with the additional slides for traffic is incorporated into the record.
Okay.
I do want to summarize now by saying that, first of all, we appreciate the detailed attention given to this application by your staff, by the planning commission, and by the mayor and council. In pursuing this application, my client has met with the boards of both existing community associations, held a meeting open to the entire adjoining community, as you heard, and has had numerous discussions and meetings with your staff. We estimate at the community meeting that there were approximately 60 people. We provided a sign-in list for folks to provide contact information so we could keep them informed as we move forward, but unfortunately, signup list disappeared, so we don't have an exact count. But we think it was about 60 people. We remain committed, however, meeting with the community throughout the process and continuing not only to meet with them, but to find ways to give them updates as we move through the process. The application has been the subject of a council work session and a hearing before the planning commission. We received favorable recommendations from staff in the staff report and from the planning commission. We thank them for their review of the application. Council has held two public hearings already, and tonight is the third public hearing. In an effort to provide adequate outreach, my client not only has met with the community, but we requested the delay of the council's review to accommodate a community meeting as suggested by the planning commission. That meeting was held on the 16th of January, as we discussed, and we provided the summary of that meeting. The application is a request to modify the existing PUD to allow for alternative use of the subject property. It is not a rezoning. It is a request to change from one allowable use to another allowable use within the PUD. Those uses that we are requesting are residential in nature. As has been stated in the public hearings, the golf course is not a viable enterprise. It has been acknowledged that the property was on the market for many years, and there was comment that the city had looked at the prospect of acquiring the property and operating in golf course and rejected that idea as not being in the best financial interests of the city. It was testified that the golf course started to lose its character as a community facility when the non-golf-related amenities were sold off to the city, and the course essentially became a golf-only pay-as-you-go golf club and not a community club. To the city's credit, it continues to own and operate the public facilities that were non-golf-related, the pool, the tennis courts, the other facilities, for the benefit of all residents of the city. The task my client has undertaken has been to propose a new community at densities and lot sizes compatible to the existing neighborhood. The new community will have a maximum of 450 units, although it will likely be closer to 400 units when we lay it out. And will contain a mixture of single-family lots at the 4,000 and 6,000 square foot size, which is compatible with the existing single families, as well as townhouses, which are allowed in the PUD. The blended density at 450 units is proposed to be approximately 2.3 units per acre on a gross tract area of 191 acres. Now, some of that land is forested on the other side of the creek. And so, there's been a comment that perhaps we should look at the development envelope. The development envelope's approximately 80 acres. On the 80-acre piece, the mixed blended unit density, single-family and townhouses, is 5.6 units per acre. Of the 191 acres, over 100 acres are proposed to be retained as open space. At the direction of the city, no apartments are proposed. The proposed development will remove 80 acres from the floodplain. I heard Alex say approximately 100, so between 80 to 100. And will also result in the ability to revise the FEMA maps, to remove portions of the existing community from the FEMA floodplain maps, thereby eliminating or reducing the requirement for floodplain insurance. We believe that it may be possible to accelerate the review of the FEMA maps for the existing neighborhood, because that's a built-out situation. By creating a stormwater management system compliant with current county and state regulations, the project will accommodate runoff from the existing neighborhood, handle all of the stormwater management requirements for the new development, and alleviate the current situation of standing water on the golf course property that occurs during rainstorms. The property will feature an extensive trail and recreation network of over seven miles of trails that could be linked to sidewalk or trails in the existing neighborhood for use by the existing neighbors, and also could be potentially linked to the city's master plan trail proposals. Traffic has been reviewed at this stage for adequacy, and we've engaged in a dialogue with the neighborhood and S.H.A. to address additional operational concerns, as you heard from our expert. Let me be clear, this request is a first step. Refinement of the layout, the unit mix, the total number of units, the traffic improvements, buffers, landscaping, and many other site design-related issues will come as part of the subdivision and site development plan review. We provided illustrative proposals to give a sense of what the project could feel like, but this is not being approved should we get approval by the council on this request. That would have to come back for further meetings and further public hearings. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of an amendment to the PUD to allow for alternative uses already allowed in the PUD. We are proffering a cap of 450 units, but beyond the design and layout of the site will be presented in great detail at future applications if we are fortunate enough to move forward. We thank you for your patience and detailed review. We thank your staff and the planning commission for their recommendations of approval, and we respectfully request your approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ship. Next person to sign up to speak is Margot Osborne. Ms. Osborne, state your name and address for the record. And I think the mic will pull down if you get it in front of you. Okay? There you go. It should bend down the top.
Oh.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Margot Osborne, and I live on Greenview Drive, right along, right behind the tennis courts. And I guess I live on what is now currently the floodplain. I didn't know I was living on a floodplain. But I can tell you that a few years ago, a police officer came to my house at 3 o'clock in the morning and asked me, strongly suggested that I leave my house. in the morning and asked me, strongly suggested that I leave my house, because I had to worry about a flood. I have had problems. The water table is very high. I don't know how you can lower a water table. It's there. And it's very high. My heating ducts are constantly flooding in really wet weather. One of the things that I want to say is, in 1989, when these houses were built in the first place, I can't believe that the city of Laurel actually agreed to have those houses built on a floodplain in the first place. So then, when the houses, after they were built, the construction was shoddy. And so I am concerned, if you do build houses over there, what about the oversight? Are you going to have enough house inspectors to make sure that they're properly built and not condemned like a house, I think, on Creekview Drive that belonged to a friend of mine years ago? Her house was condemned. So that is another concern. Yes, maybe we'll be getting a lot of city money, but what good does it do if the houses fall down? So that is, so I'm, that's basically what I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Next person signed to speak is Carrie Lawn. State your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Lawn. I live at 14109 Greenview Drive with my husband Jim. I do, I will be very brief, but I do want to say that we never received a letter informing us about any of this. We learned from our neighbors across the street. So if you have 94 letters that weren't delivered, I'd certainly like to know why ours wasn't. My only point this evening is I'm still very, very concerned that the city would consider this size and this density of development with one way in and one way out. And I would personally like to request a copy of the statements from the fire marshal and also the police department in that regard. If I could have those, I would appreciate that.
Ma'am, they're in the record. You can go to planning, and they'll be glad to furnish you copies, whatever you need.
Okay. Once again, my concern for the neighborhood is safety getting in and out because of the traffic.
Thank you. Wait, let me, Ms. Lawn, there, you can get all, everything that's in the record right now online as well, but we'll make sure you get hard copies. Kelsey Eustace. State your name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name is Kelsey Eustace. I live at 14224 Greenview Drive with my husband, Thomas. We own our home. My main concern is the safety of the community in which I live. Personally, I feel that having one entrance and only two exits located right next to each other on Laurel Buoy Road is a safety hazard if any additional housing is added. My main concern is what will happen when we need to evacuate. I use the word "when" because it doesn't seem a question of if we will be evacuated, but when we will be evacuated next. As I have heard from many of my neighbors, that they have been evacuated multiple times in past years. In addition to WSSC causing evacuations by opening the floodgates, other reasons could be a fire or a tornado, just to name a few. Can you imagine if all of the current residents on top of the new residents from up to 450 additional homes are trying to evacuate at once, all onto Laurel Buoy Road? This is a recipe for disaster and a safety hazard for everyone who lives there. At the Planning Commission meeting on December 12th, which I attended, one of the Planning Commission members brought up the idea of building another road that would connect to 198, given the current communities and the proposed community another entrance and exit. So far, I have yet to see the applicant seriously consider partnering with the city to consider building this road. At first consideration, this sounds like a good fix to the problem. However, there is a substantial reason why this additional road connecting to 198 should not be built, as doing so will cause significant forest and wetland loss. Because of the irreparable environmental damage that building a road through forested wetland and across bare branch would cause, I don't believe that building this additional road should be considered. In conclusion, because an additional road that cuts through wetlands and forests should not be considered, in my opinion, it becomes impossible to build additional housing without endangering the current residents in the case of an emergency evacuation. For this reason, I'm asking the mayor and city council, my representatives, to vote no tonight on the map amendment for the safety of the current residents, including myself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kelsey. Wendy Gagnan. State your name and address, Wendy.
My name is Wendy Gagnan, and I live at 14103 Greenview Drive. I live on the golf course. I've been there since the very beginning, which is 30 years. And the first thing I want to say is I take great issue with saying that the golf course is unviable. This is a wonderful golf course. It's been improved greatly. Golf Digest has rated it as one of the best places to play in Maryland, only three or four years ago. I mean, you can say that's a talking point, which makes it, oh, yeah, it's no good, so let's just put a bunch of houses there. But this is a sweet little golf course, and it has been mismanaged, and the city lost a great opportunity not buying it in the beginning, because if it had been treated like Enterprise in Mitchellville and become an all-public golf course with reasonable rates, and the other plus with our golf course is it's one of the very few in the whole county and other places, too, that's walkable. You can walk this golf course, which is great in terms of exercise. Anyway, what I really wanted to talk about tonight, because my concern is that this golf course is going to be destroyed, and then the development is not going to be approved, and then what do we have? So I have some questions about the process. If you're going to start with flood med-
Mediation.
Then, and start with the pond, or the lake, or whatever you're calling it, by the clubhouse, how are you going to know that that's going to work until we have a major storm? You know? I mean, you can do things and say it will, but how are you going to know? My son was visiting me, and he said, oh, you ought to get frightened, damn, to let go of its water and test it that way. Ha ha. But anyway, what I want to know is, how much of the golf course is disturbed until you go through this whole process of doing some filling to see if that works? And, you know, this sort of thing is the whole, and I also read somewhere in the flood mitigation, this four-page thing that's posted on the Laurel site now, that one of the burms is going to be removed. Which berm is going to be removed? You know, these barriers that keep the golf course from flooding supposedly. It says that one of the burms is going to be removed. I'm assuming it might be the one on the, you know, run near 17, but that's a concern, too. I have a request, but I think it's probably legally unworkable. I'm going to appeal to the conscience of the county council of Laurel. I think if you approve this application, there should be conditions. And the first condition would be that the water mitigation would have to be proved to work under severe weather conditions. And then another request that I think should be, you know, would be to ensure that the golf course is not destroyed and the land become what some neighbor calls a wasteland in the event these plans do not work out, or you don't get the FEMA permission, which, you know, FEMA's may not even be insuring anybody anymore. There, that's going to be something Congress is addressing. In addition, I also request that the developer be required to post a bond to restore the golf course to its existing state if their project fails. A restoration that would include the pumping station and whatever berm they're supposed to be removing, and so on, so that the original surrounding neighborhoods can be, you know, protected from these, not be, I mean, what happens if this doesn't work and the developer disappears? And we've had this happen in the beginning, and we're flooded, you know? If you raise a floodplain and it doesn't work out, and it's sloping to the west, what if some of our homes that never were flooded are flooded? I mean, who's responsible? You know, I mean, these are the concerns that, you know, my neighbors that live near, that have the flooding issues, like was just raised, you know, are, you know, asking questions about. And I have one final brief statement on behalf of two different neighbors that couldn't be here tonight. One of them is investigating what happens to property values when you close golf courses. He's collecting a lot of data that is showing that there is at least a 20% drop in property values of homes adjacent to golf courses that are closing. And we've had two or three in PG County that have had this happen, too. And the other issue is, another neighbor has been trying to sell her house. Now, until it was announced that this development was going to happen at the end of the summer, we had a bunch of homes that sold at either their asking price or even more, and two of them sold in four days. Since September, the beginning of September, no homes have been, have sold in our community in Patuxent Glen. And, I mean, one, the neighbor that talked to me that is so disturbed, I mean, it's been months rather than weeks, or even days, you know? And she's already dropped her price once, and now she's thinking about having to do it again. So, you know, I'm going to chat up some local realtors and see if, you know, if this is a fluke or whether there's truth to this. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Cheryl Panama. I'm going to, I apologize. I didn't want to crucify the last name. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cheryl Panam. I live on Summit Lane in the Patuxent Glen development. I am the vice president of the HOA, but I am not here as a representative of the HOA, as I stated in the last meeting. I have had several meetings with the developer. I've, you know, gotten to know him. I've gotten to see his plans. I've seen the changes in his plans. I feel like he is very willing to work with everybody, including the council members, as well as the neighborhood, to amend plans that need to be made in order to make this development happen. I've heard several condominium neighbors say that it's a little hidden gem, because it's a golf course, and it's open space, and it's green land. I'm not disputing any of that. It's a lovely green space to look at, but that's all it is. It's, the golf course has gone downhill. There's not much revenue coming in there anymore. It's not getting used a lot, which does keep the traffic flow slightly down in my neighborhood. But there's also been concern about Laurel itself not sustaining itself with the businesses and everything else that have been around. Several have gone out of business, not enough anchor stores coming in that are high-end type stores to help the revenue. And I think by putting in a development that's a nice new development and building the houses, you know, the movie says, build it and they will come. I'm for the map amendment. I think that, given the circumstances of the possibilities of what the golf course could be, I think the development would be a much wiser choice for Laurel in general. So I'm for the map amendment, and I would hope that everybody sees it, too, and I know that I'm a minority for saying that, but I feel like it would definitely help to bring in more revenue.
Thank you, Cheryl. Rick Niles. State your name and address for the record, sir.
I guess my legal name is Frederick Niles. My address is 9314 Hilltop Court, Laurel, Maryland. I've been an owner since 1996. I'm a former president of the HOA there. I'm also an aerospace engineer. I have two major issues with their proposal. Number one, I feel like they have purposely obfuscated the stormwater management and the flood zone management issues. They're two separate issues. They've said it so themselves. I think what their plan is, after talking to them and listening to their proposal, is they're going to use their engineering staff to prove that the existing FEMA maps are not correct, and that, without actually changing anything, that we're not in the flood zone. So they're not actually changing nature, they're just convincing FEMA that everything's okay. And then they're proposing their stormwater management of their community so that they meet the county standards, which of course is good, and they have to do. Now, there is still a benefit, them getting FEMA to change the flood maps would reduce our flood insurance, but it's, it's not like they're actually changing nature. The floodplain is where the floodplain is. Secondly, the traffic volume, you know, 450 more houses, I'm sure you've heard that that'd be a lot of volume going through just the one entrance and two exits. The red arrow would just make the traffic even worse, and it really doesn't cost them that much to change, to add a red arrow to an existing light. I agree, they say they paid for it, but to say that that's a huge benefit for us, it seems like a minor cost. So they've also done a traffic study to show that it's safe. As I said in the, in the meeting earlier, the last meeting, that it may be, the Beltway is safe, but it's not a pleasant experience. So just because it's safe, I buy their assessment that it'd be safe, but it could be very difficult to get out in morning rush hour. Finally, the open space flood zone, the area that they say that they're going to keep as open space on their map is all flood zone. They couldn't build anything there anyway, so they're not really giving us any concession. They talk about density not being any different. I absolutely agree, the density wouldn't be any different, but the volume would be. So I think they're kind of playing technical words there, that, yes, the density is exactly the same, but 450 more houses, it's 450 more houses. So if you actually talk about the density where they're building the houses, it's going from zero to 450 houses in that area. So the density would be the same as what we have currently, but the total volume going in and out of that entrances would be a lot more. So summary, they're not really providing much benefit for the existing homeowners, and in turn, we're losing a lot of property value, as you've heard from the other residents, from having a golf course that we live on, and I urge the council members to vote against this map amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Nina McDaniel. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name's Nina McDaniel, 14225 Greenview Drive. And I see from the development map that the Patuxent Glen drainage will be impacted. So I wanted to state that there should be a guarantee that there will be no net increase from historical values of stormwater runoff in our area. I don't know if a new traffic study has been filed yet that completely encompasses the 198 alternative entrance and intersection. I also want to see if there's going to be a study posted for construction noise mitigation, should this be approved, and what their compensation to the landowners would be, and if a alternative layout will be provided with a larger setback from the development property line for to compensate us that back up to the golf course, so that we're not losing as much of a view as the original proposal, because, as many of them have stated, that's the main reason we have bought those properties, is the nice green view. And now it shows that we'll be backing up the townhouses that are multi-story, and that's in no way, that they can put enough visual shielding in to mitigate that. So I urge the council members to vote no.
Thank you. Holly Elmer. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Holly Elmer, and my address is 9408 Spring House Lane. I've been a Laurel resident now for almost 30 years. I'm asking you to please do not approve the development plan application, that you do not, that you do not- not approve rezoning of this property. I believe that we are not looking at this within the larger picture in several ways and for the following reasons. One is that we are living in an era of global climate change. And the application research is based on a 100-year flood plan. I heard people in other meetings, engineers, talk about why are we not looking at 250-year flood plans, 500-year flood plans? Residents have talked about how flooding is a reality. I've seen the golf course flood and there's a history of evacuations, a history of evacuations. Something very important also is that at the planning commission meeting, which I attended, one of the planning commission members said, yes, a second entrance on 198 would be very excellent and important. The young woman who spoke about safety, public safety, this is a huge issue. Now, why wasn't this looked at by the developers? Because of the wetland issue most likely. It would be very hard, based on Maryland environmental regulations, to probably get another entrance through 198. And in the event that there was a major flood or any kind of emergency, a tornado, this could be loss of life. This is a public safety issue and we are looking to you to provide safety for us, the residents of Laurel. So, I strongly urge you on that point to please, this application is not ready to be approved and then work out all the details. We need to look at the larger picture first before we get to the details. And the other thing is the environmental damage. The Patuxent River is one of the more environmentally preserved rivers in the state of Maryland and it will take a huge amount of land re-engineering, of filling the floodplain in, removing. And with the construction of 450 homes, there is likely a substantial negative impact on the river. That also has an impact on all of us, the environment, the poisoning, whatever we do to the environment is going to come back to the safety, the public safety of the residents of the city of Laurel. So, I don't believe we're ready to approve. I'm asking you to see that we're not ready to approve an application and say, we'll work out the details later. We need to look at the big picture for the sake of the residents of Laurel. We need to know you've got our back. Do you have our back and our safety, not just our finances? The most important thing, regardless of finances, is the welfare of the citizens. We need to know that you have our back. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Demilia Shaw.
My name is Demilia Shaw. I live at, well, I own property at 9327 Palmer Place. And I just have a few comments. I was unprepared for this. I really didn't know too much about this. I ran into a current resident at our condo office, a condo association office, and he had shared this information with me. So, I feel like the community, the city, the developers have done a poor job in communicating to the residents. As my fellow resident of Laurel lives back there, she had mentioned that she didn't receive any information on what was going on. And so, apparently, this has been going on for a long time. And I finally started to look and do my research and figure out, you know, coming to this meeting and was invited by a current resident of that. So, I ask that you guys do a better job of communicating this information to us. In addition to that, just listening to what everyone had to say about their, the feedback and the things that were discussed during this meeting today, just concerned about the things that will affect us as far as traffic right now. I've lived in, well, I've owned property at this greens of Patuxent since 2003 and traffic has definitely increased in Laurel since I've owned property there. And so, only imagine that 400 or 400-plus residents or units are coming to this area, the increase of traffic and how that's going to affect the community. As someone had mentioned, this is a gem and hidden and not a lot of people know about this area. So, for it to become this place that is increased with individuals and families, I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about my property value, concerned about insurance and knowing that we are in a flood area because that was not the case and I did not know that as well. And also knowing the timeline of this, what does that look like and where do we find that information? Is that something public on your records, on your website, or where do we find that information? Because that has not been shared with me as well. And so, those are all my concerns. It's brief. You know, I just, this is all new to me. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Demilia. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Odessa Phillip. I live at 9407 Nicholas Lane. I have been a resident of this community for now 18 years. Once again, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to testify against, in front of you, for this same issue. I'm once again going to register my extreme concern about this proposal. I understand that the request before you is for the adjustment of the PUD to allow use that is currently permitted. While this may be true, I'm concerned that the concept is somewhat disingenuous, considering that the initial plan was never to allow over 900 homes to be built in this community, especially not traveling through a single signalized intersection at Clubhouse Boulevard in Maryland 197. Over the last few days and weeks, I have reviewed documents gathered from various members of my community, from the city, in order to better understand what was initially planned here. I want to know if you have really gotten a good understanding of the initial intent of the planners in that time when the community was zoned. I find it very challenging to have an intellectual conversation with members of council and the mayor when we who live in this community feel that this decision affects our actual lives. We are passionate about this issue, as you can see. We are here tonight and we have been here many nights. This is the first issue in my nearly 20 years in this community that has connected the owners in both the single-family homes and the townhomes. We've all come in together. There are people in my community who purchase properties at a premium to live on a golf course. As a professional engineer registered in Maryland and a consultant living and working in Laurel, I did the research before I purchased my home. There was no additional development planned here. I did that research because I know how these things happen and I wanted to be sure that my biggest investment would be protected. I don't know if all my neighbors took these steps, but I knew better. I did the work. But even if they didn't do this amount of study, who could have imagined in the late 1980s, even through last year, that if you purchased a home surrounded by other homes in a golf course community in a set neighborhood, that your most prized possession and biggest investment would be put at risk by potential real estate development? I want to feel that the owner is not just hearing our issues, but actually working with us to develop solutions that can be of use to the existing residents. There are members of our community who were extremely concerned with how the attorney representing the owner initially started the meeting. He stated, we're here to hear your concerns, but I don't know if you, coming out and saying you oppose it is going to do any good, something to that effect. This issue automatically alienates the existing community from our new proposed neighbors in that when they purchased that home, they know that they bought a house that backs to another community. We, however, made a decision to purchase properly, property in a golf course community. Our community is a gem, tucked away from lots of prying eyes. We've loved that element of this community. And like I said before, we paid for it. One of our neighbors testified a moment ago with concern about extending an access point to Maryland 198. With all due respect, impacts to wetlands and forests can be mitigated right on site because they can't do anything else there anyway. We would not want the council and the mayor to approve this amendment without making sure there's some other way for us to get in and out. It's a safety issue. You've heard it mentioned before. We've also talked about property value, but I think it's important to note that people who would have purchased our homes, and I think a person just mentioned this a moment ago, will not do so in the future. Why would you buy a home built in 1980 when there's a shiny new penny right there? That doesn't actually improve our home value at all. Some of the city documents that I looked at expressed a desire to shift city residential occupancy from so many rent-based properties to owner occupancy. The reality is that there are a number of elite people who believe that this community was actually a good investment. They didn't sell their properties. Instead, they chose to hold on to this investment. This means that the mayor and city council are letting down the people who have already proven a level of commitment to the city of Laurel. We, the owners, are still actually paying taxes to this city. Aren't we considered important enough to the tax base for you as well? It is disheartening to believe that we aren't enough to those who we have elected to represent us, that the taxes we pay aren't enough. Now, I understand something must be done here. This property remaining vacant isn't a benefit to our property values either, any more than this residential development. I'm concerned that this applicant hasn't exhausted all options for development of this property. Even cutting the number of homes in half would be considered a benefit to most of us. I'm also concerned that the council, planning commission, and others with the ability to slow down or stop this process aren't hearing our comments with the courage to take a stand against the redevelopment that leaves the residents and taxpayers who have already shown our commitment to this community hanging out to dry. Just to be clear, I'm asking that you vote against this amendment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Odessa. If no one else signed up to speak, is there anyone wishing to speak? Karen, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Karen Smith. I live at 9320 Creekview Drive with my husband. I don't want to rehash everything that was just said tonight. I just ask you guys to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 8:01 and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of ordinance number 1924, approving a map amendment application number 880 as read into the record.
I'm Smalls. Do I have a second?
I'm going to second with comments.
Okay, we'll have a discussion in a minute. Have a motion and a second discussion. Valerie?
I would just ask that the developer continue to engage the residents with the traffic issues and all of the concerns that they continue to raise. Be available to them if it, if you have to have additional meetings, I'd ask that you do that.
Other discussion?
I would like to discuss something.
Mr. Carl, go ahead.
Back in September 28th, 2017, when I was first advised of the owner plans to develop a Tuxent-Greens golf course, I reread the article several times and it says in here, Cohen, who is the owner, who is in the, who is early in the approval process for the planned unit development, said he plans to keep the golf course running for at least two years while operating the clubhouse as a banquet hall indefinitely. He also says in here, it's a long process to get my approval to build homes there, but if it doesn't work out, I'll keep it as a successful golf course. Now, the rest of the article goes on about him hiring this landscape management company, which was going to take care of the golf course. But it, it appears now that he's already taken eight months. Originally, when he first spoke and he said he's going to close the golf course by the end of December 31st, 2018, I didn't think I heard him correctly because I remember the two years he said he was going to keep it open originally. But he has said it three other times now. And I too, at the meeting, at the meeting down at Patuxent-Greens, I was also offended when you start off a meeting, and my head count of the citizens that were there weren't 60, it was between 75 and 80. And when he started off the meeting saying that he doesn't want to hear any of our comments as far as opposition to the proposed PUD amendment, he just wants to hear input about how we could do it correctly. I was a little offended by that at the beginning of the meeting too, as stated by one of the homeowners there. I also am concerned due to the fact that one of the meetings, one of our other developers was putting a full-size ball field in their development. And I asked Mr. Schiff about the ball field. He said, no major recreation, no ball fields, just recreation areas. Well, if you look at the buffer areas from 42 feet maybe to 130 feet, that's what they are. They're small little recreation areas. A lot of people back in my day would call them yards. So, there's really not going to be any proposed recreation areas where you can actually have organized or any major recreation sports on there. I also asked him if he ever thought about maybe keeping at least nine holes on the golf course. That was out of question. Now that we know the golf course, according to Mr. Cohen, and at least three or four different occasions, said that he's going to close it by December 31st, 2018. In their proposal, under proposed improvements, they said, "The proposed development will preserve the natural environment and history of the property through environmental site design, protection of important views, and repurposing of existing structures." The Prince George's County Health Department actually, in their regards to the proposal project, said, "The site will be transitioning from open space slash green space to a significant amount of impervious surface," meaning that surface is going to be non-penetrable or passage, meaning that all this open air, green space, open space is going to be almost eliminated. Now, they keep harping about the 55 acres, which I know they put into their recommendations, past Bear Run branch. They keep mentioning this 55 acres out there. That is wetlands and that is swamp lands. That can't be developed at all. So, that part of it doesn't even really matter. And if you have, if you have 42 to 130 feet, depending on where they're going to put these three-story townhomes or these two-and-a-half-story, single-family homes, your view is going to be a building. It's going to transfer and there might be a little tiny little space in between the two, which they propose, and somebody mentioned it, they use the words very, I'm not saying they're trying to trick us, but they use it in mitigating what actually is going to be there into thinking that we believe that it's going to be really a lot of space. 450 units, and I know every time they say 450, reduce it to 400. But I will guarantee you, if this is approved, it's going to go to 450. The other thing that I've read about property values around golf courses, they do, they go anywhere from 15 to, they lose property value from 15 to 20%. My issues are the floodplain, which WASC, I've attended a lot of meetings, couple little seminars that they put on, and every person that speaks for WASC, we are not a flood management dam. We are a water, water management dam, meaning that they don't care how much water they let out of that dam. And the way they let water out is by chains and they go by links on each one of those gates. And that's what happened in 2011 when they opened it up because of all the, several hurricanes that came up, especially Hurricane Lee. And this is the picture that one of my constituents gave me of that golf course. The fairways on 1, 2, 3, 12, 13, 14, and 17 were all underwater. The fairways on 1, 2, 3, 12, 13, 14, and 17 were all underwater. There was 11 inches of water on the golf course. At that point in time, I lived at Pat Tuxton Greens, I lived over at Spring House Apartments, and I took a boat from the clubhouse over to 17th Green, which is the farthest green you could get on that golf course. I took a small little rowboat over there. The traffic that they proposed, the first one they proposed is a plot where they were going to put a right turn, this was the only thing that they had proposed, a right turn lane coming off of 197 onto Clubhouse Boulevard Northbound, a proposed right turn, they put on a potential right turn. Up until the meeting, then they came up with the left turn lanes on there. Probably 15, maybe 15 years ago, when I lived over at Spring House, I pulled onto 197, and the only thing I saw coming from the back at a high speed, and he was doing approximately 70 mile an hour, was a vehicle that struck me in the rear. He was intoxicated, he hit me at 75 mile an hour. I still have, I remember the traffic being so bad on there because I still don't have a lot of feeling in these two fingers here, so I remember how bad that traffic actually was on 197. It's got a lot worse because we've had citizens report fatalities right there at Clubhouse The reason, there's one other thing that I wanted to bring to the attention of everyone here, because I did, I constantly try to do my homework on this, is that Cohen and Siegel developers actually bought the development over by roadway back in 2015, I believe it was, I could be mistaken. But they proposed the Hawthorne development that was originally proposed in 2009 and fell through because of the recession at that time. The ownership then could not get the funding. Well, they bought it and they expected to start development in the latter part of 2016. And over the next eight years, it says, this is an article from the Laurel Leader dated September 18th, 2015, "Over the next eight years, the completed project will include 1,006 apartment units, 139,000 square feet of commercial office space, 1,466 parking spaces, and seven buildings." This was to accommodate, or this had the potential for another 500 to 700 people taking the train based on this development. And it was owned by the same development that bought the golf course. I would like to know what the reason was that they never were able to develop that area, because it's bordered by a train track, a commerce center, the back road of businesses on Route 1, and a bowling alley with a large parking area. And right now, it's the same thing, it's a trucking firm. I believe the name is Saile, S-A-I-L. It started back in probably October, maybe November coming into there. So what it was for all them years was roadway, now it says Saile, it's a trucking firm. So obviously, there's a problem with the development there, and it's back to its single thing, a trucking firm. That golf course has been there for 60 years. The owner, Mr. Cohen, said it could be a successful golf course, yet he doesn't want to do it. And we know what the reason is. It's the 450 developments, it's 450,000 for the townhouses to start off with, and the $650,000 single-family homes, that he's going to make a ton of money on that development. The city, through their website, proposes progress through people. They also have a flyer that says, "City of Laurel, Maryland, Government to the People." It also says, "Communicating with the people." And I believe, like I said at the last meeting, and I will constantly say, that the way you get the citizens' trust is through transparency. And those beginning, that meeting with the public would have never happened by this owner because originally, when they sent out certified letters, and now we hear of more people not getting those original notification, it was our planning board with Rick Wilson, Billy Welford, and Mitzi, and I can't remember her last name, although I did call Kim and I got it today. It was because of them proposing that because of the holidays, because of the flu, because of all this, we were rushing this a little bit too much. We needed to meet with the, we needed the owner to meet with the citizens, and Billy Welford was the one that said, "Don't send out letters and stuff. Put up, there's one way in and one way out. Put up a big billboard." And we had 75, close to 75 or 80 people come to that, because when you let the people properly know, then they will voice their opinion even more. Thank you.
Mr. Sidnor, do you have any comments?
I have several questions, but the engineer answered the questions for me. My main concern was pretty much, how is this process going to be developed? Like, how many years will it take to do this? From my knowledge, personal knowledge as well. And also, as I said, once you raise it out of the flood zone, you don't need flood insurance, but some of my research said that they still recommend that you get flood insurance even though they're going to raise it. So I was concerned about that as well. But other than that, I'm pretty, they answered most of my questions I had.
Thank you, Keith. I think what, if you look at the report that came from the 16th meeting, the developer indicated a three-to-five-year build-out. You just shake his head, yes, that's fine.
I'm encouraged by the interest and commitment and concern it's raised by the residents adjoining this property, you folks. And I certainly encourage you all to stay involved with this project, follow it, be as vocal throughout this process as you have been up to this vote tonight, because you'll help shape what this community could possibly look like. So again, I just encourage your continued involvement as this process continues to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Let me make a couple of comments. First of all, I was the one that shut Ladue Miller down, myself. The mayor wouldn't do it.
Different mayor, by the way.
Excuse me, not this mayor. The mayor refused to do it. And in those days, I was a bit younger, and as we were doing development around Laurel, I'd go see what was going on. And I actually pulled the bonds. Now, in fact, one or two property owners got hurt in that. But more importantly, the roads got finished, the sidewalks where they are got finished, the streetlights got put in, and those were both onsite, what's called onsite bonds in the development, and offsite bonds. Okay? So don't, I mean, a lot of people have said a lot of things to me in emails. And I'll just say that Mr. Smalls and myself have extensive experience in planning and zoning. I spent 17 years on the planning commission. Now, let me come to the Patuxent River. I happen to be the chair of the Patuxent River Commission, where I've been for several years. So anything that happens in Laurel regarding the watershed, I'm concerned about. And going back to WASC, it turns out that they've got 10% of their reservoirs are filled with silt. And the Patuxent River Commission has pushed them to implement a plan to take the silt out, because that's 10% more water, and there's millions and millions of water, gallons of water up there, can be held in those things so they don't have to open up the gates. The reason they opened the gates up is they don't want to jeopardize the integrity of The city never owned the golf course. That's been stated by, I don't know where that came from, I have no idea. The city did, in fact, buy the sauna, the hot tub, the swimming pool, the tennis court, and the building, because that developer just wanted to close it, that owned it at that time. It was in bad shape because I went and looked at it when we bought it. I happened to be on this council. I wouldn't get in it. The mold was all over in the hot tub. Okay? But what the city did was, they spent funds to convert it to meeting rooms, which the homeowner associations can use. They maintained the golf course. I know they maintained the swimming pool, because my grandson takes his swimming lessons there. And he pays the out-of-city rate, because he lives in Howard County, but chooses to come to Laurel. Let me just say something about stormwater. This is not a, the golf course is not, it was not covered under stormwater regs in effect at that time. Since that time, somebody talked about impervious surface, somebody. The developer must demonstrate that he can hold the water on the property. That's an absolute requirement. So you're going to see some pervious surfaces. They're not doing real well right now at the Blacktop, but they're getting there. The McAdam eventually will be pervious. But they're going to have to maintain the stormwater on the property, and then it filters off the property, actually into Bear Branch, which goes into the Patuxent River. Comments have been made about the swamp. City owns 70 acres of swamp on the other side of Bear Branch. The swamp actually serves a purpose to the watershed. I mean, I've learned more than I ever wanted to know about swamps. Okay? They're brackish, they smell, but they're doing something for the watershed. So we need to understand that. The last thing I want to say is, this is not a rezoning. Couple people said it's a rezoning. It is to certify what's going to go on in the rest of this PUD. Very last thing I'll say, I don't make any decision before anything that comes to this mayor and city council. The normal process is, there is a work session, which was held on December 4th. There was a mayor and city council meeting on the 11th of December, which was the introduction in the first public hearing. There was a planning commission public hearing on the 12th to get their recommendation back to the mayor and city council. There was a second public hearing on January 8th, because we didn't have a second meeting in December. And at the request of the planning commission, we went ahead and post, usually on a second reading, we'll have a decision, possible action. We have a third public hearing tonight, which is not the normal process, but we did it. And there's going to be another agenda item tonight where there's going to be a third public hearing. So all that said, I don't think, my experience has been that most, most elected officials in this city, or appointed officials, don't make a decision before they've heard all the facts. And I will assure you that I don't make a decision until I've heard all the facts. I don't make campaign promises. I do tell you, the important people in the city, that I will consider all the facts, and then I'll make a decision. Mayor, do you have some comments? Okay. Ms. Raff, you call the roll.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
No.
Mr. Sidnor?
I vote yes.
President Laz?
Yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'm going to concur with a few comments. First, for those that may not know, the mayor, whoever the mayor is, doesn't really vote on legislation, so I want to make sure everyone understands that. There's been a lot of different emails going back and forth, and I think some of it needs to be clarified because it's just inaccurate. We will, my job as the mayor is to make sure we enforce all rules, regulations, laws that pertain to development or anything else that goes on this city, and we will do that. Just a couple of comments that I think is important. Yes, the planning commission, as Mr. DeWalt said, asked for a second public hearing, or a third public hearing here, and I thank the president, I thank him for doing that. That same planning commission, that he forgot to tell you, also recommended approval with conditions. That's another set of eyes and ears that have listened and read the information along with staff. So that recommendation came to the council. Nothing is going to happen to this property. Nothing is going to happen to this property without it going through a full review process, without getting permits and approvals, nothing. So if it's decided that the club wants to close, they're going to close. They own the property. I would hope that they would keep it going as long as possible. But during the review process, we are changing permitted use in the PUD zone. That's all we're doing. What most people have talked about tonight is at the planning commission level. That's where those, those are the experts. Those are people that have sat on the planning commission for many years and make those decisions. They're not political decisions, they make decisions for what is best for the community. The public safety issues, the environmental concerns, the public works issues, the police department issues, the parks issues, the recreational programs, the flood issues, the stormwater management issues, traffic. Bonds will be required, as every developer is required to have bonds before permits are issued. All information is on our website of what is taking place. We're not hiding anything. To accuse my administration of trying to hold things back and not be transparent, I'm not going to allow somebody to get away with that. It's on the website, we are open, we have always been open. You can meet with our director, but to say that we're not transparent is just a false statement. And all of that information is on our website, and you can come up and talk to council, call council, call my office anytime, and you have an issue or a concern. I'm pretty accessible, quite frankly. The communications piece, we have attempted to get communications out, we have required the developer to do certain things. I can't tell you why you didn't get your registered letter, but I want to know, so I would hope you'd come see me so I can find out why you didn't get that letter. But we are going to require the developer to continue to, as this process moves forward. There are long ways to go, and you need to be involved. I was at a homeowners meeting when I found out that the golf course was sold, and I advised everybody that night. There were probably, I forget which homeowners association it was, there were probably 30 people at that homeowners association meeting. I think they were getting their management company instead of the elected officials that night, but there were 30-some people there at least. When I found out the golf course was sold, I let everybody know about it as quickly as I could. Yes, we were offered to buy that golf course about five years ago. I spoke to many mayors who advised me not to get into the golf course business, and I just didn't do it. So those are the things, and yes, it says up to 450 units, up to. You're not going to see 450 units. The planning commission has that full authority, they are going to be required to do all the recommendations that departments and the county, the state, and the federal individuals look at. We also have the two means of egress, and we've, again, and I've asked... We also have the two means of egress, and we've, again, and I've asked the attorney to continue to look at those entrances. There's two ways out of there. We need to make sure that we upgrade those if possible, or come up with ways to show the planning commission that those issues that you have are met. The last thing is on communications. I'm very sorry for someone who had to take the signup list. And I would ask if somebody has that, that you would return that. That is a way of communicating, and that's a disservice to you. We didn't take it. I wasn't even there. There were a few, I think, that were there. I don't think the developer would take it. I'm going to ask the developer to at least send out a letter, or drop off a letter, and ask people for their emails, their contact information, so we can continue to be in contact with them. But I'm very sorry that that occurred, because that is a disservice. And with that, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Need to come back to order? The minutes, approval of the minutes will be deferred to the next meeting. I'll move to agenda item number seven, report of the mayor and city council. Huh? Yeah, I was going to start with Keith. Carl? I'm sorry. If Keith isn't back, I'm going to start with Keith. Carl?
No report this time.
Thank you, Carl. Valerie?
Yes. I attended the day of service that was here at the city, which was a very, very nice service. I'd like to commend Christine Johnson, who had a lot of input in that service. And I also attended the reef laying ceremony at our peace pole outside. That was very nice. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes, I just want to echo what Ms. Councilor Nicholas said about attending the Martin Luther King ceremony. I was there also. I also want to stand Ms. Johnson for putting the ceremony together, and the mayor for approving it. Now, Martin Luther King is one of our greatest heroes, so to recognize him on a day of celebration was very good for the city as well. Thank you. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Keith. Fred?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to attend the First Generation College Bound College Retention and Alumni Social. That was held at the Green Belt Marriott. A number of graduates, college graduates, and a number of young people who are participants in the First Generation College Bound were there and talked about their experiences working through the program. I want to remind my colleagues here and others that the 27, 15, I'm sorry, 18 legislative session has convened, and remind members of the council that one of the priorities for the Maryland Municipal League and municipalities across the state is restoring the highway user revenue. A few meetings ago, I did report in a bit of detail on what that means, but in essence, those dollars which have been reduced since the early O'Malley administration helped municipalities specifically to make road, bridge, and sidewalk improvements. And Maryland Municipal League and the municipalities of Maryland have been working very closely over the years with the administration to restore those fees. We've gotten those fees back in smaller increments, and we're working, and hopefully we'll have some success this session in having those dollars fully restored. That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Fred. On the 11th, I attended Laurel Regional Hospital Foundation meeting, and I've got another one tomorrow night. They're coming fast and furious now. On the 12th, I met, I was in a, what's called a teaching session with Congressman Hoyer, Congressman Brown, and Senator Van Hollen. We were there to talk about several issues, but one thing that they did mention was the restoration of the federal infrastructure and transportation fund, that would then free up some funds in the state for the highway user tax to come back to municipalities. Also, on the 12th, attended the reef laying at City Hall at the peace pole. On the 15th, we had the Martin Luther King Day of Service Celebration at City Hall. On the 16th, attended the Historic District Commission meeting. On the 19th, attended COG meeting in DC, and also Melanie Dwancheck's retirement party down at, name it, Jailhouse?
Jailbreak.
Jailbreak. I've never been there, but it was jam-packed. That concludes my report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me offer condolences to Bernie and Kathy Robinson. Bernie used to be the former president at PNC on the passing of their son, Brian. Also Caleb Gould on the passing of his father, Kingdom Gould, been around for a long time and made his mark in the area. Also, had the opportunity to attend, good friend of mine, Sean Leonard, who passed away, graduated with Sean, and they had a very nice memorial service event for, to remember Sean on Saturday night down at Oliver's, and it used to be one of his favorite places. So, really a nice turnout for him, so I was happy to see that. The Chesapeake Math and IT Academy at North High School, the Grand Open and Riving Cutting. Again, I want to thank them for the invitation to be with them. Also, we had the, back in December, the Reef's Across America Ceremony here in Ivy Hill. And I want to congratulate Melanie Dwancheck as well for the Laurel leader, and had the opportunity to attend her little get-together that they had. The COPS Camp graduation at Partnership Hall Activity Center, and then the Martin Luther King Reef Ceremony here at the Laurel Municipal Center for the employees have done, we thank them for that. Also, the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service here at the municipal center, which turned out really well, and hope to make sure that that's an annual event here. A couple of announcements. Prince George County Public Schools Budget Work Session at Laurel High School on the January the 23rd at 7:00 PM. This will be at the Prince George County, this is about the Prince George County Public Schools budget, and I encourage those to go and participate. On January the 28th, from 1:00 to 4:00, will be the Health Fair at the Laurel Armory Anderson Murphy Community Center at Fifth and Montgomery Street, and I encourage people. Pat Hagan has really worked very hard, along with others, to put this on, and I believe there's over 40 different vendors that will be there. On the January the 29th, the Chief of Police will be having coffee with the chief at Sips on C Street at 7:30. And the grand reopening on February the 6th of our Laurel Emergency Operations Center, from 11 until 1, the public's invited to that as well. And then on February 12th, 4:30 to 6:30, my time with the mayor at the Barmann Kaiser Public Safety Complex will be held. I'm going to hold this, so you can go to Rich. I'll do this later.
Okay. Rich, you're up.
Thank you.
You want to kind of do?
Yeah. It's fine. I can hear from there.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We're going to recognize and honor some of our officers who have done some great work over the past several months. I'd like to thank the family members for sticking it out. That was a very long meeting. I wasn't expecting it to last that long. Thought we were actually going to have a bigger crowd here, but I guess they weren't for us, so. We're going to go ahead and get started. What we're presenting tonight are life-saving awards to several officers. Tonight's first life-saving award goes to PFC Andrew Meyer. On April 27th, 2017, PFC Andrew Meyer was returning to his home in Pasadena, Maryland, after a full day of police training. PFC Meyer was flagged down by a citizen in Anaronda County reference in accident they just witnessed. PFC Meyer made contact with the driver of the vehicle involved in the accident, and while speaking with him, the driver collapsed. The subject's face turned gray, and his lips were blue. PFC Meyer had also noticed the subject had pinpoint pupils, was sweating profusely, and was incoherent when he tried to speak. Meyer recognized that the subject was more than likely under the influence of an opioid, and was suffering the effects of an overdose. PFC Meyer responded to his police vehicle and retrieved his department-issued Narcan. He administered the proper dose to the subject, and within seconds, the subject regained consciousness and was now coherent. Anaronda County Police responded and were able to confirm the overdose when they located heroin inside the subject's vehicle. If it wasn't for PFC Meyer's quick thinking and actions, this subject would have likely, would likely have died as a result of a heroin overdose. For all of his actions, PFC Andrew Meyer is receiving the Laurel Police Department's life-saving award. PFC Eagle, while you're taking those pictures, if you want to wait till I get out of the way, otherwise I'm going to be in the background of all those pictures. Tonight's second life-saving award goes to Sergeant Anthony Miscovish. On September 26th, 2017, officers were dispatched to an assault call. Sergeant Miscovish arrived on scene and found the male victim suffering from a stab wound and lying on the floor, bleeding profusely from his arm. There was a large amount of blood on the floor, in the hallway, and also in the kitchen of the residence, indicating that the subject had already lost a lot of blood. Sergeant Miscovish applied pressure to the arm in an attempt to stop the bleeding. He used his foot to apply the pressure, as he could apply more force than just using his hands. When the fire department arrived on scene, they advised officers that Sergeant Miscovish, using his foot to apply pressure, was very smart and likely stopped enough blood loss to possibly save the subject's life. Due to his quick thinking and actions, Sergeant Anthony Miscovish is receiving the Laurel Police Department's life-saving award.
Congratulations.
We can miss our parents. We're coming back over.
Congratulations.
The final life-saving award tonight goes to Corporal Zachary Rexine and PFC James Bright. On August 3rd, 2017, officers responded to the 600 block of Main Street for a check on the welfare call. Corporal Rexine arrived on scene and found an unconscious male subject, cold to the touch with labored breathing, lying in a bathtub. Corporal Rexine recognized the signs and symptoms of an opioid overdose, as well as recognized known heroin users who left the residence, and directed the next incoming officer to bring Narcan into the scene. Officer Bright quickly arrived and administered a dosage of nasal Narcan to the subject. Corporal Rexine and Officer Bright then removed the male from the tub and placed him on the floor in anticipation of starting rescue breathing, and began prepping the AED if needed. Officers were preparing to administer a second dose of Narcan when the effects of the first dose began to take effect, and the man's health immediately improved. Due to their quick response, ability to recognize the signs of an overdose, and their actions, these officers are being awarded the Laurel Police Department's life-saving award. Chief, what do you like to say, if you were?
Thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate the honorees. Well deserved. As we have progressed throughout the years, we initially started with the AEDs. We've now rolled out the Narcan. As a result, we've obviously had several saves with it, and we are in the process of issuing tourniquets and going through the appropriate training for tourniquets and clotting material. Policing has changed a lot. It's evolved a lot. We are no longer just the police. We're not there for the law enforcement aspect alone. We are now first responders. We truly are first responders. And as you've heard tonight, our response truly does save lives and make a difference. So I'd like, again, like to congratulate the officers that received awards, thank them for everything they do on an everyday basis, and continue doing what you're doing. Again, thank you, and you truly did save lives. So thank you very much. And thank you to the council, the mayor and the council for the support that we've continued to receive in regards to a lot of the different equipment that I've asked for. The Narcan is coming from the governor's office. It is a governor's grant for opioid prevention. We're also going to do some opioid awareness training, as well as some public presentations for opioid awareness and/or intervention. The tourniquets are being issued and have been obtained from the council governments. It is a council government program. They will offer the training and all the first aid kits and the tourniquets that are required. So, again, we're moving forward, and without the cooperation and support of the mayor and the council, I don't think we could do it. So, again, keep doing what you're doing, and thank you for everything you have done. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
(applause)
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you all very much. I know you want to leave because you don't want to hear the rest of the meeting, right? Okay. I like, thanks. I have a proclamation read at 2018-1. Whereas the City of Laurel recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of Laurel to be successful adults, and all children should have access to the highest quality education possible. Whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the community and the City of Laurel. And the City of Laurel is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools for which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children at home. And whereas the City of Laurel has the highest quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, organizations, to raise awareness of the need for effective education. Now, therefore, I pray and may the mayor of the City of Laurel do hereby proclaim January 22nd through 27th, 2018, as School Choice Week in the City of Laurel, and urge all Laurel residents to join with us to recognize and reaffirm the importance of an effective education. And I'm going to just give this to Joanne, since she deals with our after-school program and a lot of our kids. Joanne, you want to accept this? Move to agenda item number eight, general public hearing. I'll open the general public hearing at 8:51. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public, general public hearing at 8:51 and a half. Move to agenda item number nine. Is Health Office, is the Health Office going to speak? Tim? He didn't come? Okay. Move to agenda item number nine, second public hearing, with possible action on Resolution Number 1-18, a resolution of the mayor and city council to establish a Citizens Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. I've read the title of the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:52. Have no one signed up to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 8:52 and a half. Undertain a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the establishment of a Citizens Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll second it. Thank you. Motion to second. Any discussion? Call roll, Ms. Ralph.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Laz?
Yes.
Mayor Mel?
Okay. Move to agenda item number 10, second public hearing, Resolution Number 2-18, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel opposing the high-speed, superconducting magnetic levitation SMA GLEV system between Washington, D.C. and Baltimore, Maryland. I've read the title of the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:53. Have no one signed up to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 8:53 and a half. This will be discussed at the work session on Wednesday, February 7th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. We'll have both the proponents and the opponents here to make a presentation. And then it will be on the agenda for a third reading at the first mayor and city council meeting in February with possible action. Is there anything else to come before the council? Adjourned.